Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting council for February the 5th, 2025. We shall begin with a moment of reflection and respect. Thank you very much. Our main counsel to use the button on your microphone when you're speaking. Next, item three, confirmation of the agenda resolution.
That council adopts the agenda for the meeting of February 5th, 2025 with the following additions. Barb Forstic delegating regarding the report titled Elgin County Council Correspondence, Relocation of the Elmer Library, and correspondence from Cynthia Grant regarding the report titled Elgin County Council Correspondence, Relocation of the Elmer Library, and item 7.1 being moved to follow item 5.2.1 and subsequent items renumbered accordingly.
I reminded everyone, and then I forgot to press the button. All right, so any additions or changes or okay, whole discussion. All those in favor, as Carrie, thank you. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? None. Next, item five, your delegations in public meetings. We have a committee of adjustment resolution?
That council does now recess and commence a committee of adjustment meeting at 7:01 PM. The Committee of Adjustment of the Town of Elmer is convened to consider application. Additional information relating to the applications is available for inspection between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM weekdays at Elmer Town Hall. Signed, written submissions are accepted by the Treasury, Secretary Treasurer prior to or during the hearing, and such submissions shall be made available for inspection by any interested party. If a party who is notified does not attend the hearing, the committee can proceed, and the party is not entitled to any further notice of hearings. Submissions or requests for notice can be sent to clerks@town.elmer.on.ca. A copy of the decision will be mailed to those persons who attend or are represented at the hearing and those who have filed a written request with the Secretary for notice of the committee's decision. The committee will receive input in the following order: presentation of the planning or of the staff report by the manager of planning and development, the agent or applicant, the public and staff, and the clerk. Application 01-25 is made by Cappy Holdings Incorporated as the owners of the property known municipally as 555 John Street North in the town of Elmer. The purpose of this variance is to permit a one-story drive-through restaurant with reduced zone regulations.
Thank you very much. Could the manager of planning and development please provide the report? And I think instead Terry is doing the report. Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Through you to members of council, I can provide a brief overview. The variance before you tonight is for a proposed one-story drive-through restaurant located at 555 John Street North. This location is on the northeast corner of John Street and Beach Street, which is provided on figure one. The variants the applicant is seeking are for reduction in minimum parking space widths, reduction in the parking area setback from three meters to 0.3 meters along Beach Street, reduction in the number of queuing and stacking lane spaces from 10 to seven before the pickup window, and two to one after the pickup window. And I'd just like to state that the proposed parking reductions meet the minimum AODA parking requirements and the Town of Elmer Design Guidelines, but the zoning widths are slightly larger as the zoning bylaw predates these new requirements. As a part of the application, the agent submitted a minor variance application preliminary site plan and traffic impact study to support the proposed entrance off John Street. Town staff and the county were consulted on the application as John Street is a county roadway. The Director of Engineering for the county reviewed the traffic study and approved of the entrance off John Street, as long as it's a right-in, right-out that contains a traffic island to separate the turning movements. Onto the four tests of planning, the manager of planning concluded that the application meets all the four tests of the official plan and zoning bylaw. The conclusion of the report is that it's planning staff's opinion that the proposed application for minor variance is an appropriate development and use of the lands, and would recommend approval subject to no concerns being raised tonight. If approved, the development will be subject to site plan approval and have to enter into a site plan agreement. And that's a summary, brief summary of the report.
Thank you very much, Terry. Excuse me. Is the applicant present? If so, do you wish to speak to the application? Let me just, yes, then give your name, please.
Good evening, your worship and council. My name is Lloyd Perrin. I work for CJDL Engineering in Tilsonburg, and we're the agent for Cappy Holdings. And with me tonight is George and Peter Kapiejanis. They're present also. So we are in concurrence with the recommendations of the report. There are a number of variances, but in our opinion, they're minor. And as the site plan has been drafted, it complies either with the design guidelines of the town or other regulation like the AODA. So we believe that it's with the intent of the official plan and the zoning bylaw. And we are relatively close to having the site plan resolved, but we wanted to get in front of the committee of adjustment to determine if the minor variances are going to be considered. And then once this evening's over and we get direction from the committee of adjustment, then we'll be able to finalize that site plan and take into consideration any direction that the committee may have this evening. And we're present to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this? If so, please approach the podium, give your name. Can you turn on your microphone? I think it's on.
How's that? Can you hear me now? Okay. Sorry about that. So my name is Doug Granger. I'm with Granger Fuels. We own the lot next door and behind the proposed development. I guess my concerns are relating to the size of the lot. Everything that is here, even though it may be within specification, screams that this lot is too small for this development. Reducing parking spaces, moving the curbs over, moving within one foot of the property line for parking. Now, why does that bother me? It bothers me because if I can just approach the screen, this picture's old. So there's actually a driveway right here right now, truck entranceway. I don't know if you guys have been by there at all. So this is a truck entrance all the way through here, card lock. Now, we worked with the town to try and move truck traffic off of John Street and get it, instead of coming out on from Beach onto John and then back into our property. We had always planned and developed to put that driveway in, which we did about a year ago, to help with the traffic at the corner. My concern with this development is that we're going to end up with, because of the size of the lot and the limited parking and the small parking, we're going to end up with people parking on our lot. We're going to end up with people, oversized vehicles parking on our driveway behind trucks, people with trailers parking there, walking around and going into this restaurant, whatever it's going to be. Or they'll end up pulling into our lot, parking along the side of the building, and then walking over if they have oversized vehicles. So what we're creating here is a possible animosity between neighbors because we don't have the space, and I can't have the truck entrance blocked by vehicles parking there. So that's why I'm here today because we think this is going to really impact my business and my lot. Anybody have any questions or you understand where I'm coming from?
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak to this? Okay. Was there any other communication received?
No, there was not.
Counsel, do you have questions of any of the people who gave their deposition? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you. To the planner in this particular matter, slight downsizing was indicated in the size of the parking lot. This area has an abundance of pickup trucks. Does that infringe on the normal usage of a pickup truck?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, it does not. The variance that we're requesting is five centimeters. Right now, the zoning bylaw requires 2.8 meter wide width. We're proposing 2.75 meters wide, which is conformedated with the design guidelines of the Town of Elmer. As Mr. Conine had noted earlier, is the zoning bylaw predates the design guidelines. The design guidelines that Elmer has adopted is more in keeping with today's standards, and we follow the design guidelines, the most recent document.
Counsel, Rahi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess it's kind of two questions. One to Terry and one to the Mr. Granger. With having the setback to the property line so close, is that going to ever impact anything further on down the line as far as what we have going on with the town, as far as snow removal or anything? Like, is that, is there going to be an issue years to come by allowing that to happen?
Through your worship to Counselor Rahi, no, there's a quite large area for snow storage as it is right now, and the right-of-way width there is quite, quite large. So it, you have to think of the right-of-way width as being the property line that's off of the roadway. There would still be lots of room for future road reconstruction for snow storage, anything like that.
Okay. And then I guess another one to you, Terry. Is there anything that we can do to help not cause neighbor problems as far as signage? Or is there anything that we can make or suggest that the applicant does to try to help alleviate the issue that is probably going to happen? I do agree with Mr. Granger. That's where I'd be parking if I had a trailer. So is that the neighboring property? So?
Through your worship to Counselor Rahi, I mean, an option would be to install some fencing around the perimeter on the north and east side. Those are the limits that apply to the neighboring property. And there were, another option would be no parking signage on, on the fencing. That would be kind of, we could work through that through the site plan design. That would be an option. That would create a physical barrier that would, people wouldn't want to walk around.
Is that, is that something we can ask or suggest? Is something to help alleviate the issue? At least try?
Yes, I believe that could be added to the resolution if council would desires. Sorry, was there another question?
Okay, Counsel, just Rosie, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the questions I had perhaps directed back at Terry is thinking about the problem or the potential problem that Mr. Granger has expressed. If I had a trailer or a boat or something like that, and I was looking for somewhere to park to go to the Wendy's, is there parking on Beach Street there, or is it no parking all the way around?
That's a good question. Through your worship, there is parking there currently, and we were having parking issues on progress, which is north of here. So we could look at addressing that through installing no parking through there and looking at what could be done to, to limit parking on the street there for Beach Street. But currently there is parking on Beach Street.
Sorry, I was offering it more as a suggestion so that if the concern was that these trucks and trailers were utilizing Mr. Granger's property for parking to patron the Wendy's, that they could alternatively use Beach Street. So it was more so as a solution, so I apologize. But yeah, I think the idea of fencing and no parking signage is a good proposition. I'd be curious, would that satisfy Mr. Granger by any means? Or did he have any solutions to table for council? If you could?
No, I don't have any suggestions, but, and those are all valid suggestions, but they won't work. They won't work because people don't care. They'll park there anyway. And even if they parked on Beach Street, if they're towing a truck and trailer, let's say a pickup truck and a trailer, they're still probably going to pull through my lot and back out to John Street, and they'll either go left or right. So either way, they're still imposing on my property. And putting up a fence, great. If they want to park there, they're still going to park there, walk around the fence. And, what was the other, I'm sorry, what was the other thing? And yeah, I mean, and the problem is how do you enforce it? You could put up no parking signs, but in my experience, unless it's on a city street where they can get a fine, then it doesn't work. And then it has to be enforced. So by the time that we would catch somebody that, or a trucker complains because he can't get in because somebody's parked there, that person's got their meal and are gone. So it's about enforcement. You could put up all the signs you want, but if you can't enforce it, it just doesn't do any good. So I would just say the lot's too small, but it's up to you guys. But those are my concerns. I don't want to make them hurt.
Counsel, just Rosie, you had another question?
I'm sorry. You got it?
Okay, Counsel.
Sorry, thank you. So just listening to Mr. Granger and hearing his concerns, I'm just still trying to struggle, I'm struggling with what the solution is then. So he's, he's stating that basically he feels that lot is not conducive for what it's being suggested. So I think there's like, any other commercial business there, like I personally feel, even if it wasn't a restaurant, if there's a limited space for parking, that potential concern could still, could still potentially be there. So just because it's not a restaurant, for example, if there's limited parking, regardless of what the commercial establishment is, they could still, that, that concern is always going to be there. So I do, I do validate those concerns. I hear them, and I can see definitely how that would potentially happen or could potentially happen. But if we just continue to not approve anything for that space based on that concern, just nothing will be developed there, I don't think. So does, is, am I wrong? Is, does staff, any other, have any suggestions of something else that that space could be intended for that would alleviate Mr. Granger's concerns? I think that's a question I have for staff if they can answer it.
Anyone on staff want to answer? Terry?
Through your worship, I mean, the fencing and no parking signage, that's, that's the one solution that comes to my mind. I mean, the site is designed, if we could look at figure two, it is designed for a pull-around around the drive, the restaurant. I mean, that's intended so that if cars were queuing to get into the drive-through, that they could actually pull around and get into line if they need to. But, so it's not just one lane around the building. So, I mean, there would be some additional space that isn't necessarily denoted as a, as a parking space right now. But the fencing and parking is, is the suggestion that, that I would have.
And did you want to say something, Ed?
Just, just to add, yeah, I mean, it is, it is commercial land on John Street. Like the development, it's a challenge for the committee of adjustment, certainly because development there does help economically. It will generate other activities down there. It could generate business for the, the gas station right next to it. So there are pluses and minuses whenever you consider economic development, but there is, it is only minor variances that are being sought for this. So it isn't a large change from the land use for sure.
Counsel Rahi, last one.
I'll just make a quick comment. I guess we'll look at the positives. Hopefully, we can put some fences up, maybe a sign, and whoever does park in your parking lot, maybe they can grab some gas after they get a burger. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have actually two options. We could add some amendments to the resolution, or if, if council feels it would help, we could defer to the decision for a couple of weeks to see if there's any resolution. But how does council feel? I see the applicant has perhaps a comment here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess the one thing that we would stress is that the, the property is designated in the official plan for commercial use. It conforms to the zoning bylaw with respect to the amount of parking that's provided. We actually exceed the amount of parking that's required by the zoning bylaw by three spaces. So, you know, the applicant and Wendy's are very cognizant of the fact that they want to provide a positive experience for the people that are there, that they provide parking. You know, we could have easily cut back on the amount of parking, not had to come forward for a minor variance with respect to the width of the parking spaces, or the stacking behind, you know, the drive-through behind the parking spaces. We could have done all of those things and complied with the zoning bylaw, but that wouldn't have been, we'll say, the best way to approach this situation. We want to be able to provide parking. The, the town zoning bylaw, and I would submit, many municipal zoning bylaws don't have a requirement for oversized parking spaces on commercial properties of this size. So what's being requested about, you know, having truck parking and trailer parking, that's not, not typically what we, what we see in other municipalities or within the town's zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Barber?
May I suggest that a consideration be given to the fencing and the signage provision?
As, as an amendment?
As an amendment.
So we have a second there for that amendment. Counsel Chapman, is there any further discussion on this item? And give Owen a chance to add the amendment.
So the amendment would read, in addition to the current recommended motion of council or recommendation of staff, and I will read this for Terry's consideration, that the committee provide direction to staff to consider fencing in the site plan approval process. Would, would that work, Terry?
Okay, so you've heard the amendment. Do you have any other comments on it or questions? So we're voting on the amendment first. All right. All those in favor of the amendment? Ms. Carrie, thank you. Oh, we did, we did have a mover and a second, or didn't we? We had a mover and a second for the amendment. Yep. So we have the actual amendment now. I'm sorry, the actual resolution now.
Which reads that report Plan 04-25, Planning Evaluation Report, Application for Minor Variants A01-25, 555 John Street North be received, and that the application Minor Variants A01-25 seeking relief as follows. One, a reduction in minimum parking space width from 3.7 meters to 3.4 meters for the physically handicapped. Two, reduction in minimum parking space width from 2.8 meters to 2.75 meters. Three, reduction in a parking area street line setback from three meters to 0.3 meters along Beach Street East for a reduction in the required number of stacking lane spaces from 10 to seven before the pickup window and two to one after the pickup window, and queuing spaces, forming a stacking lane to be located in a parking aisle, providing access to a parking space, and that the committee provide direction to staff for consideration of fence in the site plan approval process.
Mover and a second, or Deputy Mayor Barber and Counselor Rahi, is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? None. Thank you. Now we will have a resolution to adjourn the committee of.
The committee of adjustment meeting does now close, and council reconvene at 7:24 PM.
Mover and second, or Counselor Barber and Counselor Oslach. All those in favor? Ms. Carrie, thank you. Now, we will go to 5.2 delegations. 5.1, Barb Forstic delegating regarding the report titled Elgin County Council Correspondence, Relocation of the Library. So Barb, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you that I can come before you. I don't have a delegation myself. I'm here to read what Cynthia wrote, Cynthia Grant. And before I read it, I just want to let you know that I was in touch with Kirk Behrens this afternoon, and he, in the correspondence, he said, he let me know that a lot of the things that are here have been addressed by, by Mr. Barber. And so, but I'm going to read it as is anyway. Submission to council for effect. Submission to Council for February 5th meeting. Tonight, you recommend the formation of a committee to be struck by the county regarding the long debated matter of the library. This is welcome news, as it is hoped that wiser minds prevail with respect to the vision of Elmer. The recent unanimous passage of the recommendation that the East Elgin Community Center be considered as a location demonstrates the ongoing failure of councils, past and present, to operate in the best interests of the town. Urban planners and architects, health and safety experts, educators and sociologists would all agree that moving the library to the edge of town into such an ill-suited building is sheer stupidity. Planners understand that many downtowns are drained by much, by such moves, leading to morbidity in the center. Architects would never imagine a library residing in a bilted, lacking windows and a warm, inviting atmosphere. Health and safety experts are alarmed to see such an important public space intended for families and children placed in a treacherous part of town. Our schools need a reasonable, safe access for their children. Our Amish community would be exposed to greater traffic hazards. Libraries are meant to be central to the communities. They serve with meeting rooms and a whole slew of resources available to all. People should not be required to drive there, and children and many seniors cannot. We have long been deprived of adequate space for the many aspects of library life to which we are entitled. The idea of resolving a venue issue at the East Elgin Community Center does not outweigh these concerns. The council members should note such concerns and demonstrate vision for the community. Citizens have already indicated their desire for a downtown location in the petition of 2017, which received 1,200 signatures. For some of the new councilors, this may be news as they are, that they are unaware of. Council needs to soberly consider their messaging to the county, act in the interests of the town by suggesting that a downtown location should be investigated. Submitted by Cynthia Grant, currently in Southeast Asia.
Thank you very much, Barb. Thank you for doing that for Cynthia. I hope she's enjoying herself in Southeast Asia. I'd like to point out to everyone here and to Counsel that we really are not debating tonight the approval or not approval of the library at the complex. Basically, what the next resolution deals with is responding to the request by the county to move forward on it. And so we are basically debating what that response is going to be. I mean, so, so don't worry about the fact that we're going to approve or disapprove or say anything about the complex and the library at this meeting. So, thank you. And again, thank you, Barb. We're going to go to 5, oh, sorry, a resolution to accept.
That the delegation from Barb Forstich and the correspondence from Cynthia Grant regarding the report titled Elgin County Correspondence, Relocation of the Library, be received as information.
Mover and a seconder? Counselor Disrosy and Counselor Rahi. All those in favor? And Carey, thank you. And move on to 5.22, Staff Report Concerning the Elgin County Correspondence with the relocation of the library. Sorry, I guess I'm not speaking into, directly have a resolution.
That Report CAO 09-25 entitled Elgin County Council, Relocation of the Elmer Library, be received for information, and that Elmer Council expressed their appreciation to Elgin County Council for reviewing and advancing the issue of a new location for the library, and that Elmer Council recommend to Elgin County Council that they establish a committee to undertake public engagement from residents of Malahide and Elmer on the library, and their proposal to move the library to the East Elgin Community Complex, and that this recommendation be provided to Elgin County Council and the Township of Malahide for consideration.
Mover and a seconder? Counselor Rahi, Deputy Mayor Barber. Andy, you're doing this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And certainly, I also want to thank the delegation. I think we're very much on the same page with wanting some broad public consultation of Elmer and Malahide residents to be conducted on this matter by the county. It's important to highlight that council members wear a different hat when they serve a different mandate, and serve a different mandate when they sit on the EECC board. So it's hard for, sometimes to understand, but at the EECC board, your decisions only reflect the EECC's interests. They don't reflect Elmer's interest, unless a recommendation from that board comes here and is duly accepted by Elmer Council. So further to that point, this term of council has only made two decisions to date on the library. The first decision was January 2023, when at the request of Elmer, at the request of the county, Elmer Council entered into a lease agreement with Elgin County for Old Town Hall that goes initially till December 31, 2027, and also provides the county with a five-year extension until the end of 2032. This is a legal lease agreement, which requires two years' notice upon either party for any termination. More recently, Elmer Council has requested County Council, in their capacity as a library board, to establish a committee to advance the discussions on the library matter. Tonight's report is further to that, in that we're expressing our appreciation to the county to advance this issue in a material way. However, we're respectively suggesting that they may be in danger of getting their skis too far in front of them on this issue, and just requesting that they, they take some time and have the consultation before asking municipalities to adopt a location in principle. Elmer is just the landlord, and we do not provide library services. Yet even in our landlord role, we appreciate the need and value for public engagement, and we also respectfully suggest that there is value in the county hearing from other locations that would like to host a library service. Again, the library service is a county service and one that impacts both Malahide and Elmer residents. So as a result, it's not really appropriate for the town to undertake this engagement because it's a service we don't provide. As outlined in the report, we do believe forming the committee and undertaking input is something that would commonly fall to a library board. So from the town's perspective, this is a common sense approach, and it's not really a large ask for us to ask them to form this committee and start doing this work. And again, we appreciate the County Council making this issue a priority, and we're confident that them providing leadership on the library services will advance this issue in ways that it previously has not advanced. So despite the back and forth on this issue, I am optimistic that we now appear on the cusp of appreciating, approaching this issue in a way that could be a more productive manner. I do know that there's a lot of emotions and feelings on this issue due to the historic nature of the matter. For many people, it may feel like they're living in the movie Groundhog Day starring Bruce Murray and Andy McDowell. But we're trying our very best to make sure that we're not repeating history on this issue by going at it from a different tactic. So I would ask everybody to set aside any past grievances, and instead focus on the positive, that we're coming together to work cooperatively on a common vision of improving county services that are going to be delivered in this community. And so I think the developments are positive, and we're starting what will be a long journey, but we're going in the right direction on this. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions of Counsel.
Thank you very much, Andy. I would add that, you know, if you're a science fiction fan, the Bruce Willis movie, The Loop, I think we're in that one, too. So, Counsel, questions, comments? Counselor Disrosy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions, but the first one I have just stems from what the CAO just stated, specifically about reminding that, reminding Counsel that the current lease we have with Elgin County Library is a legal binding document, and they are required to give us two years' notice to terminate the lease. I may, perhaps I'm wrong, but I thought it was actually in a report from the CAO to the County Council, that if they are not satisfied with the current spaces that they are running in, that if, and they can find a suitable space, that they're essentially able to walk from their lease. So I just feel like we're getting conflicting information. One, one statement is saying that they're bound, and they have to give us two years' notice to leave a lease. And then I also believe, on the record, the same CAO said that they could essentially walk if they found a more suitable space. So which one is it?
Andy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, good question. Certainly, in the previous report, it was suggested that if they feel that the library is, the notion I put out there that wasn't approved by Counsel, to be clear, it hasn't been approved or endorsed by Counsel, was that if the county felt that they needed an alternative interim location, well, they looked for a long-term solution for the library, that we would be open to considering potentially them moving someplace on an interim basis. So, so I certainly think we're open to anything that the county wants to consider or proceed. The one thing is that certainly, again, I think it's very important if we're going to move to a permanent location, which is what has been, the county's proposed to us, a permanent location of the EECC, that we would want to have some public engagements, some public consultation done to make sure that we aren't pursuing something wholeheartedly without considering all options or hearing from the public.
Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, your worship. I think everybody has to remember that this process, this time around, came from the East Elgin Community Complex Board, which is obviously made up of Elmer and Malahide. And it was a conceptual, conceptual thought that perhaps the, the complex could be considered for a library location. Over and above that, to move on from that particular point, just accepting for the report that's before us tonight, it would require the approval of four different bodies. Obviously, the town of Elmer, in the position that we are now, would have to approve it. The Township of Malahide would have to approve moving to the complex. Last time, they did not approve that. The Board would have to approve it. Obviously, they would be the first one to make the recommendation to the town. And then fourthly, and not necessarily in that order, Elgin County Library, or the Council of, of Elgin County would have to agree to it. So it's a multifaceted process, and it can get very complicated. I think if we all just decide that we want to move forward, the report before us tonight is a good step in that direction.
Counselor Oslach.
Just, your worship, just one comment. I've been on council for 15 years. The citizens of this town are so divided, there's never going to be a library in this town. We all have to get together on the same page. I've been on numerous committees for the library, all have been turned down. I understand going on for at least 15 or 20 years. I was at the opening of the Tillsenberg Library, and it only took two years. Everybody got it behind the library, citizens, service clubs, council, and they got it done. God's sake, come together, build a library. That's one comment.
Thank you for that, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Disrosy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. So firstly, I did want to, I was actually at the meeting that Elgin County delivered that report. Mayor Cookett saw me there, which was an excellent report. But I think specifically, they have clarified that any met, of a library board, can, it just causes confusion, and it questions the governance structure of Elgin County. So I think to ensure respect and clarity moving forward, I saw in this report, it was mentioned yet again, and I think if we want to ensure respect, that we need to refrain from mentioning that in any type of future context, like we need to refrain to it as Elgin County Council, because that's essentially who the library board is. But continuing to reference it to a library board is just, they've already expressed that they don't appreciate that, so I think moving forward, we just need to do that. Secondly, the notice of motion that has come from, from County Councils explicitly requests, quote, that Elmer Town Council to endorse, in principle, the relocation of the Elmer Library to the East Elgin Community Complex. That's the specific request from the resolution of County Council. So while the current resolution of this report, I agree that obviously there should be further consultation with any decision, I think we still need to answer the question that Elgin County has asked of us. I think, like, not responding to it just isn't respectful. So I think I would like to make an amendment, I guess, to the motion to include that decision of Councils. I don't know if we should separate that and vote on that on its own, like whether we endorse it or not, and then include that within the resolution itself. But I think that needs to be in there because that's what they've asked of us, and I think not answering the question just isn't polite. So I think we should answer the question that they've asked of us.
Yes, I can see your point. I don't think that this council is going to endorse or not endorse the request from a County Council, so essentially what we're doing is deferring that decision, right? Are you happy with that kind of statement, that this council deferred the decision?
Well, I think, I think members either endorse it, or they don't because they want more options. So regardless of what that reasoning is, I think it's only fair to County Council that we give them an answer. So I think we should table majority rule, and then we should include that within the resolution, so that way we, at least we've answered their question.
Andy?
I would just note that we're, since we're at the, what we envision as a beginning step of this, if Council takes a position that they do not endorse that location in principle, that could be something that would require reconsideration as we go forward on this. So you could inadvertently eliminate the EECC from any discussion. So, so the resolution that was crafted was to try to, to say, we're not ruling it out, but we just want this committee that I believe they've indicated that if we didn't accept it, they would be willing to create this committee, to start the work and to examine the options in more detail. So I do think it does directly respond to their request, but certainly, and the library board, certainly, they have, they serve the same function as the library board. We don't want to upset them, I agree. We don't want to upset them. We can call it County Council. It's, the library board function exists there, whatever it's termed.
So really, we, you know, I agree, we can't state that we do not endorse, because that would cut out any kind of consideration of the complex at all. We could state as I, I don't know the wordsmith on this, but we could say that we can defer the decision, or defer the decision on this until after County Council has moved through its options.
I think that's fine. I just think that the question that's being asked of us should be answered. Regardless of how it's being answered, it should still be answered, because any other response that doesn't, it just seems disrespectful, so I think we should respond to it.
Counselor Chapman?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Press the button.
Oh, sorry. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I thank you for your comments, but I tend to think that we are answering it. We're not saying yes or no. We're saying that we would like to look into it further. We don't have to say yes or no, because if we do, we're limiting our options. So if we do the request that we have, that it be looked into further, we're just not ready to make the decision yet. That's what it's saying.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what is Counsel's goal from doing this, then? Like, if this goes to County Council, and they, like, are you hoping that they create a committee to look into this? Like, to me, I could see them questioning even doing that if, they don't even know if we endorse it or not, because why waste their efforts if we are going to endorse it if we're not going to? So I definitely see your perspective about how, you know, about how, you know, we are trying to, to kind of move this forward. But I just feel that there needs to be a little bit more clear dialogue between us as a municipality and them as a, as a, as the county council. So I just think it needs to be reworded that, like you said, like Mayor Cookett suggested, that maybe we are choosing to defer it because we're looking into other options, but we still need to answer the question in a roundabout way.
Councilor Barber.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna try to get my thoughts together, because this, I was going through some of the history of this, and it's been a long process. To Andy, you mentioned, we're basically just landlords. We don't provide any library service. We're just landlords. So there's nothing stopping the Elmer, or the, not the Elmer Library, the, the library board from approaching the complex, the board, and saying, we would like to move the library here. And they could bypass us altogether. Is that correct? With the two-year, currently with the two-year notice?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna call on the county council, because I think that's what the preference is. So yeah, certainly, Elgin County Council can put a library, can provide their service anywhere in the town of Elmer that they desire to. Right now, they have a policy that says that Elmer would pay for it. So that they would, certainly, their interest in working with us on that is, is to try to, to have us fund, whether it's leasehold improvements or, or a new building. And the report kind of speaks to that. I didn't really get into it in my presentation, that we don't really have funds right now. So that, that is kind of the, the carrot and the, the stick, if, if it were. But yes, Elgin County Council has a provision of the services. And I think we would, I do know of one location that's already expressed interest to both us and Elgin County for hosting the library service. And I think it would make sense for the public engagement to also include people to come forward and have their own things. Just because we're 50% owner of the E E C C doesn't mean that we should favor ourselves, essentially.
Follow-up, if you may. Thank you for clarifying that and the funding piece, which I think is very important as well, because going back a couple of years and looking at one of the surveys, I don't think Elmer residents supported paying any additional fees to fund the library, or a fund, an expansion of the library. So I think that's a very important piece, to see where the residents are at now and what support there is behind. Like, we have some very vocal support behind the library, but I want to see what the majority of the support from the community is. So, I don't know. It's, it, it can be very confusing and very complicated when we get this many people and this long of a history involved. I'd like to hear more public input and engagement. And I think, although looking at the history, there's been many committees that have already been, been put together and asked for feedback. I, I think I would support a committee to try to engage with the public, to see what direction we can go and what, what options, whether it's the E E C C, the current location, or another location, but what options are there.
One more comment, and then I'll make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, it's, it's kind of a couple of different things going on here. I, I do agree with Councilor Barber. I think at some point, the county, if they can, they will probably get tired of the nonsense that kind of surrounds this whole thing for the last 25 years. I mean, if the building's too small, we need, we need to do something about it. I don't know why it has to be so complicated, just like most things to do with municipalities. Why can't we just ask them to give us a couple of different scenarios, like, like this whole resolution of a board and stuff? Like, I, I agree that there should be some, some, there needs to be public input on this, but it's quite apparent that every time there is, nothing happens. You can never tick all five boxes to make the perfect library. So then what happens is, is you wait another 20 years. And at some point, something has to happen. The best way to get things done is to actually do them. And that is what's lacking in this library project. Things aren't getting done, and it's time that something gets done. So what is the best resolution that we send to them? I don't know. But it needs to not be so complicated.
Okay. Let me, let me just try and summarize something here for a minute. The, first of all, many people have said that this is a great move by the county to actually get involved in doing the library. And it is a great move, and we're very happy for the county to be doing this. The second thing is that this resolution does not really, number one, answer what the, the county sent us. And secondly, it doesn't talk about looking at other options, which the report kind of does that, but the resolution does not. So I think maybe to kind of meld those two together, if we added something to the resolution that made it clear that we would like the county to look at all options in their committee, that that would kind of solve the situation. So think about that for a minute.
Yeah. And I, I think they only, the, the major difference with what we're suggesting this time around, that, I mean, we're not interested in repeating history. And Elmer is in a worse place to, to have this discussion on, on funding something that we don't have the funds currently in our reserves. We've had the two biggest capital years, 2024 and 2025, in the history of this town. We're not in a position right now to fund something. So the way we're doing it differently this time is looking to the county to provide leadership as the library board, that will, will provide a guiding vision for how their service will be provided for Elmer and Malahide residents. And that, that'll be fundamentally different than any different, any approach that, that's been taken here before, where, where we tried to, to go it alone. And, and certainly, that hopefully will serve as a catalyst when the county council has something that they recommend. It will make it much easier for us to discuss here and, and really put, put that plan into effect here locally for what's in the best interest of the county service.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think Owen has crafted a, a resolution which might tie these suggestions together. Go ahead, Owen.
Yes. So my suggestion for council would be the addition of a whereas statement, which would read as follows. Whereas the town of Elmer desires for full consideration of all viable locations for the Elmer Library, with consideration for public engagement and input of the options before the town of Elmer, township of Malahide, and El, and Elgin County. And then it would move on to the rest of the resolution, which I can read if council wishes.
Counsel, how does that grab you? Counselor Rosie.
Sorry, I just had a question for potentially the C O or the clerk, depending. So what was just stated by the C O was that we, as a municipality, are seeking more involvement, like, we're appreciative to the county, but we're seeking more involvement from them and looking for direction and for the county to make a decision of what to do. Is that correct?
Through you, yes. So we're, we're looking for the county to, to form a committee with a specific focus on this issue, to bring stakeholders together, to, to get the public input, to look at, at locations, and to make recommendations to county council that will then be considered by both Elmer and Malahide and, and potentially the E E C C if that option continues forward. And we'll, we'll really give a, a clear best option recommendation from the library service provider to, to our community.
Deputy Mayor Barber, you had your hand up sort of halfway.
Yes. Just a clarification, the, I, I like the suggestion from Owen, the whereas section. Does it conflict, though, with the, the third paragraph and their proposal to move the library to the East Elgin Community Complex? Do we have to tweak that one as well? That would be one choice. Or perhaps, or, or any other location, or another look?
Yeah, that, that, being on county council, when the, when you look at that resolution, it simply asks county council to look at engagement from residents to move the library to the East Elgin Community Complex. It's not direct or ask county council to look at other options. And I think that's needed, if, you know, council agrees, it's needed to look at more than just the complex. So we should add something to that third paragraph. I think it's mentioned in your report, you talk about other options, but it's not mentioned in the resolution. Comments, Counselor Rosie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would agree with Deputy Mayor Barber that if we're going to explicitly ask county council to consider other options, we should perhaps outline what those other options are. Otherwise, it's kind of just made up, right? So I think we need to, again, we need to be clear about the communication that we're giving back to the county so we can truly progress this matter, right?
Did I see some other hints? I think, I don't think we're at the, I don't think we're at the point where we can suggest this building here or that building here. I think what the committee, the county committee would do would be hear from the people of Elmer and Malahide, who would make those suggestions about where the library could be. We, we are not at this point here to suggest that. So when we say options, we kind of leave it open for county to look for them, or actually to get the suggestions from the people of Elmer. You know, after all, it is the Elmer Library. So I think the people of Elmer will have suggestions about where it could go. And maybe this council will have some suggestions as to where it could go as well. But I think the main thing is that we specify to the county that we would like them to have other options, other suggestions than the complex to look at right now. I keep looking like I've dumbfounded everybody. Deputy Mayor Barber first, and then Counselor Rosie.
Yeah, I, just looking at Owen, I think he's got a, another version.
So I will read the full resolution, which I have drafted. Whereas the town of Elmer desires for full consideration of all viable locations for the Elmer Library, with consideration for public engagement and input of the options before the town of Elmer, township of Malahide, and Elgin County. That report, C O zero nine dash twenty-five, entitled, Elgin County Council, Relocation of the Elbow Library Be Received For Information, and that Elmer Council Express Their Appreciation to Elgin County Council for Reviewing and Advancing the Issue of a New Library For, a New Location for the Library, and that Elmer Council Recommend to Elgin County Council that they Establish a Committee to Undertake Public Engagement from the Residents of Malahide and Elmer on the Library, Their Proposal to Move the Library to the East Elgin Community Complex, and Other Possible Options for the Library's Location, and that This Recommendation Be Provided to Elgin County Council and the Township of Malahide for Consideration.
Are we happy with that? I don't see anybody saying no, no, no. I think that's clearer than the one we had before. And it does at least give some direction to some ask to the county that is clear. Okay. So are we good with a friendly amendment, rather than going through the amendment stage? Does anybody want to make it a, a specific amendment? Are we good with friendly?
Friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment? Anyone object? Very well. Let's, let's call the question on this one. And you just read it out. Let's read it one more time, just to make sure.
Whereas the town of Elmer desires for full consideration of all viable locations for the Elmer Library, with consideration for public engagement and input of the options before the town of Elmer, township of Malahide, and Elgin County, that report, C O zero nine dash twenty-five, entitled, Elgin County Council, Library Board Correspondence, or sorry, Elgin County Council Correspondence, Relocation of the Elmer Library Be Received For Information, and that Elmer Council Express Their Appreciation to Elgin County Council for Reviewing and Advancing the Issue of a New Location for the Library, and that Elmer Council Recommend to Elgin County Council that they Establish a Committee to Undertake Public Engagement from Residents of Malahide and Elmer on the Library, Their Proposal to Move the Library to the East Elgin Community Complex, and Other Possible Locations, or Other Possible Options for the Library's Location, and that This Recommendation Be Provided to Elgin County Council and the Township of Malahide for Consideration.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, W, you make the motion, Deputy Mayor Barber, and seconded by Counselor Ozlatch. Anybody want to have it read again? All those in favor, as Carrie, thank you. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Good discussion. Item six, Consent Agenda Resolution.
That the February fifth consent agenda be received for information, and that the included recommendations within the staff reports be adopted, and that council approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on January twenty-second, 2025.
Moving second, there, Counselor Barber and Counselor Chapman. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, as Carrie, thank you. Six point, no, seven, seven point one, C O, the B M O, B M A Consulting Resolution.
That report, C O zero eight dash twenty-five, entitled, B M A Consulting, 2024 Municipal Benchmark Study, be received for information.
Moving second, there, Counselor Chapman and Counselor Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, this is our annual benchmarking B M A study. The information in this study is largely based on 2023 information. We anticipate our next study will begin to reflect our growth more and show positive movement on local affordability. What we are seeing to date are small incremental improvement, improvements in the right direction. However, we will likely see that larger shift as more assessment comes online. One trend that is evident in this report is that the town is not contributing a high enough percentage of levy funds towards our reserves. While this doesn't impact our financial position in 2023, it will in future reports, given that we've issued debt for the new water tower, and have drawn down our reserve positions, particularly in 2024 and 2025. So council will begin to see more focus on building up our reserves in future budget discussions, as that is necessary to maintain a strong financial position. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions of council.
Counsel. Very good. Seeing no questions, all those in favor of the report. Carrie, thank you. Seven point two, Director of Legislative Services, Naturalized Lawns Resolution.
That report, Clerk zero six dash twenty-five, be received for information, and that council directs staff to include the provisions, the proposed provisions for naturalized lawns in the final version of the land maintenance bylaw for consideration at a future meeting of council.
Moving second, there, Counselor Ozlatch. No second, there, Counselor Rosie, thank you. Owen?
Yes. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council requested at the last meeting of council that we consult with other municipalities, which had previously implemented a naturalized lawn bylaws. So we sent around a survey to bylaw enforcement staff, as well as spoke with several municipalities about their enforcement of these provisions. Based on that, we had over 20 responses to the survey, and a number of conversations have taken place. I, I would like to reassure council that the, the contents of our bylaw match exactly the recommendations that we received from other municipalities. We have strong definitions around turf grass, around the naturalized lawns. We have boulevard provisions to create setbacks between the boulevard, as well as neighbors' properties. There is also height restrictions in sightlines, as well as in those bordering areas. Based on the discussions with the bylaw officers from other municipalities, enforcement of these provisions is really no different than enforcement of regular lawn provisions. It's, it's a judgment call based on the, the officer when they approach the, the property following a complaint. And usually, it, all it takes is a conversation with the property owner to determine whether this is an actual naturalized lawn project that has been planned and has been, is a deliberate implementation of the policy within the bylaw, or if it's actually an abuse of the bylaw, and it's just somebody letting their lawn go. So most municipalities reported that only a few homeowners within their municipalities are actually using these provisions. And generally, the amount of complaints that they get are very limited, and are usually resolved either with a conversation with the homeowner, or a conversation with the neighbors about how this is allowable under the bylaw. So with that, I can answer any questions that council may have. And the decision is before council.
Counsel. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. To Owen, did Communities in Bloom give any feedback, positive or negative?
Yep. I, I did include, included in Communities in Bloom, the position, or the, the opinion that they provided us. They don't have an official policy on the project, but they are generally supportive of naturalization and incorporating that into the aesthetics of a community.
Anyone else? Counselor Chapman.
Through your worship, I just have one question. If there is a failure to comply, how long from the time of complaint to correction of the issue?
So generally, so when we, the town receives a complaint through our portal or through the front office or via phone call, we would send a bylaw officer without, within a week, and they would either issue, talk to the property owner, or immediately issue an order on the property for the lawn to be cut. Usually, that gives two weeks of compliance time, so we're looking at three weeks at that point. In most cases within town, the lawn is then cut by the property owner because the town has the ability, if it is not cut after those two weeks, to order a contractor to cut the lawn at the cost of the property owner. So generally, you're looking at a process that takes about one month to remedy the property, and it can certainly take longer just depending on the situation.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution? None opposed, thank you. So we go, move to item eight, New Business and Matters of Urgency? Let's see, any reading of bylaws and proceedings there on? Owen?
That council gives three readings to and approves bylaws, 13-25 being a bylaw to establish a telecommunications policy, and bylaw 14-25 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular council meeting held on January 22nd, 2025.
Moving second, Counselors Rosie and Counselor Rahi. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And as carried, thank you. Any inquiries by members? Any statements or committee reports by members? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. Based on the uncertainty of the economic climate, particularly at the federal level, it's reassuring to know that the town of Elmer has, for quite a while now, adopted a bi-local or bi-Canadian practice. And I would encourage any of the people that are tuning in this evening to also watch your purchases where you're able, made in Canada or product of Canada, which are the two distinguishing features of the Canadian products. If we begin to take care of ourselves, maybe collectively, we can make ourselves in a better position.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, item 12, reported the mayor, usually I don't have, I have a brief report dealing with, first of all, County Council is now going through the budget process, and they're looking at under 3%. Hopefully, the budget's going to be finalized within the next month or so. I did attend the change of command ceremony for police services, and were thankful certainly for the services of Chief Horvath, and now welcome the new chief and deputy, Johnstone and Johnson. I won't say anything further in terms of a joke about those two. Attended, I did attend a symposium sponsored by the Health Recruitment Partnership. I was intrigued by one, I guess, out-of-the-box suggestion for retaining doctors and forgetting doctors, or a municipality, in this case, a municipality in a suburb of Victoria, was the employer for local doctors. The municipality actually asked for the money from the government and got the money and became the employer, and the reason it was successful, I think, was because doctors could get Omers in this situation. I don't know how well that would work in Ontario, but I thought throw that out there because of some of the ideas that people are putting forth. There are many new commercial businesses being planned and opened in Elmer. We have a number of new restaurants, I think, barber shops, and now we have a new state-of-the-art gym called Torque in the old ICS building. Check it out, it's quite a place. And I mentioned February the 11th, next Tuesday, the boundary adjustment public meeting here in which there'll be information on the scoring, the scoring summaries for the plots of land that the consultant has gone through. So it might be interesting to some of you to come and see what, how this process works. Are there any notices of motion? A meeting close to the public resolution.
That council moves into a meeting close to the public at 8:11 PM to discuss the following matters. Chief Administrative Officer Report CIO 10-25, EEECC Negotiations Update, and Chief Administrative Officer Report CIO 11-25, Succession Planning Restructuring Proposal. And that considerations of these items is close to the public pursuant to Section 239, 2B, D, F, and K of the Municipal Acts of 2001, as amended as the subject matter pertains to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, labor relations or employee negotiations, advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, and a plan, position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiation carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Thank you. Moving second, Counselors Oslatch and Counselor Barber. All those in favor? As carried, there'll be a brief recess, and we'll move into closed session.
Back everyone, we have a resolution coming out.
The council rise from meeting close to the public at 9:00 PM and reports the following. The council received for information and provide a direction to the CAO regarding Chief Administrative Officer Report CAO 1025 EEC Negotiations Update and Chief Administrative Officer Report CAO 11-25 Succession Planning and Restructuring Proposal.
Moving second, Councilor Chapman, Councilor Rahi, all those in favor, is carried, motion to adjourn.
The council do now adjourn at 9:01 PM.
Moving second, Councilor Rozier, all those in favor and carried, thank you very much ladies and gentlemen.